Good evening. It's so nice to see all of you tonight. Thank you for joining us and for attending the June 10, 2024, meeting at the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. This evening's agenda will be displayed on the screens in front of the room. Printed agendas are available for our guests at the back of the room, or you may find the agenda on your mobile device by connecting to the district's website at www.wcsoh.org. Click on the "Our District" link, select "Board of Education," and then follow the Board Docs link to our current meeting agenda. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening, the first being Agenda Item 6.01. The first set of comments is relative to Agenda Items 7.01 through 11.07. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.01. There is a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of the room. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. A timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mrs. Valentine?
Here.
Mrs. Altman?
Here.
Mrs. Meyer?
Here.
Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next part of the meeting is really exciting part of the night, and I'm going to ask, turn it over to Ms. Altman and Dr. Nestor Baker for our highlights and recognitions.
We have a couple of resolutions. It looks like we have a couple of resolutions. Do you want to vote on those first, Nancy, before everybody comes up?
Yeah, I think that might be a good idea.
Okay.
So as we get started tonight, I would like to move the following resolutions. I'm going to do them as a group of three. One is a resolution of commendation for Ben Gableman. I will read that to you, and then I'll read the other two. Whereas Ben Gableman, a recent graduate of Westerville City Schools, has concluded his decorated track and field career at Westerville North High School, and whereas he was the state champion in the 1,600-meter run at the 2024 OHSAA Outdoor State Track Meet on Saturday, June 1, at Welcome Stadium in Dayton, and whereas his time of 4, 8, 7, 5 seconds was a full second faster than second place, and whereas he becomes the third Westerville North athlete to win the state championship in the 1,600-meter run, joining Bob Kennedy in 1987 and 1988, and Jacob Dumford in 2013, and whereas he also excelled in other events at the state track meet, placing fifth in the 3,200-meter run, now therefore be it resolved that the Westerville City Schools Board of Education and Superintendent commend Ben Gableman, along with Coach Johnny Jackson and his assistants, for representing our district and community with pride and distinction. The second is a resolution of commendation for Olivia Pace, who we have shaken the hand of several times. Whereas Olivia Pace, a recent graduate of Westerville City Schools, has concluded her decorated track and field career at Westerville Central High School, and whereas she was the state champion in the 100-meter dash at the 2024 OHSAA Outdoor State Track Meet on Saturday, June 1, at Welcome Stadium in Dayton, and whereas her time of 11.65 seconds is only 2/10ths of a second off of the state record for the 100-meter dash, and whereas she is the first girl state champion in this event for Westerville Central and the first girl state champion in any event since 2004, and whereas she also excelled in other events at the state track meet, placing second in the 200-meter dash, fourth in the long jump, and fifth as a member of the 4x100 meter relay, now therefore be it resolved that the Westerville City Schools Board of Education and Superintendent commend Olivia Pace, along with Coach David Mentlow and his assistants, for representing our district and community with pride and distinction. The final resolution of commendation is for Casey Carlos. Whereas the Westerville North High School Boys 4x800 meter relay team comprised of Michael Delacenta, Gabriel Wise, Casey Carlos, and Ben Gableman, and coached by Johnny Jackson, represented their team, school district, and community at the 2024 OHSAA Outdoor Track and Field Meet on Saturday, June 1, at Welcome Stadium in Dayton, and whereas the team's time of 7, 39.91 made them Division 1 state champion in that event, and whereas this marks Westerville North's first boys' state championship in the 4x800 meter relay event and the first in any boys' event since 2013, and whereas the individual team members also excelled in other events, with Ben Gableman placing first in the 1,600-meter run and fifth place in the 3,200-meter run, and Michael Delacenta placing eighth in the 1,600-meter run, now therefore be it resolved that the Westerville City Schools Board of Education and Superintendent commend Michael Delacenta, Gabriel Wise, Casey Carlos, and Ben Gableman, along with Coach Jackson and his assistants, for representing our district and community with pride and distinction. I move those three resolutions.
Is there a second?
Second.
I mean... Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
And now, now, let's go. Winter sports recognition. We'd like to start the recognitions tonight by revisiting the 2024 Indoor State Track Championship on March 1 at the Spire Institute in Geneva. Can Skylar Brittman join me up here? Yes. Skylar, who is a rising sophomore at Central, placed seventh in the 60-meter hurdles. Skylar's family, could you stand to be recognized as well? And Andy I. and David Mentlow, the athletic director and track coach at Central, who are here with us tonight as well. Congratulations, Skylar. We're so glad we get to celebrate with you. So if you want to go up there and shake hands. Moving on from winter, we're going to spring. We'll continue with the 2024 OHSAA State Track and Field Champions from May 30 through June 1, held at the Welcome Stadium in Dayton, as you heard. Can Olivia Pace please join me? Olivia, who is a graduated senior at Central, placed first in the girls' 100-meter dash and fourth place in the girls' long jump with a jump of 18 feet 2.25 inches. Olivia was joined by Skylar Brittman, who is a rising sophomore, Olivia Mentlow, who is a rising senior, and Josephine Temperman, also a graduated senior, if they could all join us as well. You should have just stayed up here, Skylar. And I would like to acknowledge Elijah Harris from Westerville Central, who placed fourth in the boys' high jump with a jump of 6'6". Congratulations. Are you here? And family members, would you please stand to be recognized? It is delightful to be able to celebrate your achievements with you. And I do want to acknowledge Dave Mentlow and Jason Loffman, as well as Andy I. David and Jason are the track coaches at Central, and Andy is the athletic director. Now, could I have Gabriel Wise, rising senior, and Casey Carlos, rising junior, join me? These two athletes, with Michael Delacenta, who is a graduated senior, and Ben Gableman, who is also a graduated senior and who could not be here tonight, comprise the Westerville North 4x800 meter relay team that placed first at the state track meet with a time of 7 minutes 39.91 seconds. Michael also placed eighth in the 1,600-meter run with a time of 4 minutes 15.46 seconds. Thank you all for representing us so well at the state level. And I would like to recognize Ben Gableman for placing first in the 1,600-meter run with a time of 4 minutes 8.75 seconds. Ben also placed fifth in the 3,200-meter run with a time of 9 minutes 6.8 seconds. Congratulations on a fantastic showing and a truly memorable career for all of you at Westerville North. You can go on up there if you want. And I'd like to acknowledge Jody Jackson, who's Westerville North's voice track and field coach, and Kurt Yancey, North High School principal, both of whom are here tonight, and of course, these young man's family members, if you could stand. Last but not least, I'd like to invite Cameron Garcia. Ah, there's Cameron, from Westerville South. Cameron also had an impressive showing, the 2024 State Track Meet, by placing seventh in the state in the boys' long jump. Cameron registered a jump of 21 feet 9 and 1/2 inches. To put that in perspective, it's about 21 feet from this pillar right here to the front of the board table and right in front of where President Meyer sits, so that kind of gives you a sense of... So if you want to demonstrate, it's fine. So thank you. If you don't want to jump, just walk. And let's also take a minute to acknowledge Cameron's coach, Jimmy Gaul, and Assistant Principal Roderick Watson, who are in the audience tonight, and if Cameron's family is here, please stand and be recognized as well. I want to thank all of you, athletes, family, coaches, administrators, all of you who are here this evening, for helping these young people be the best they can be, and to the young people for achieving such wonderful things at such young ages. Your support and encouragement of each other and of the district means the world. Congratulations. Thank you again for being here.
Can you tell we like this part? We just keep, you know, keep commending people for their great work. So thank you all for being here. It is my pleasure to invite Vicky Ba to join me regarding the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Art Writing and Multimedia Contest. So, Vicky, come on up. And Vicky recently graduated from Westerville Central High School, and she won the 2024 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Art Writing and Multimedia Contest. The annual contest is hosted by the Ohio Civil Rights Commission, and this year's topic focused on Dr. King's quote, "The time is always right to do what is right." Students had to describe a time when they felt they needed to do what was right. Vicky wrote about being a young black woman in America who's been touched by racial discrimination and how that has shaped her social, political, and economic ideologies growing up. And she talked about an incident where she confronted a peer who called his black friend a racial slur. She wrote in her essay, "Usage of slurs that cannot be reclaimed by your race or ethnicity is nothing short of thievery." I want to acknowledge Vicky and Vicky's family, Vicky's family, as well as Andy I., Athletic Director at Central, who are in the audience this evening. So Vicky's family, congratulations. So I want to thank you, Vicky, for sharing your voice with us, and congratulations on receiving this incredible honor. And one more thing to share, this is the second straight year a senior at Central has won this essay contest, so thanks for keeping the great tradition alive. Congratulations. And as Vicky moves through there, I'd like to move on to commend those who are here for the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program. So I'd like to invite the following recent alumni, who all just graduated, to join me: Andrew Boyd, Noah Gibson, Samson Gerdjulow, Anthony Malik, and Shre Shyamalan. Could you please come up? And they are among the nine members of the class of 2024 who were named finalists in the 69th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. We also want to recognize the other four National Merit finalists who couldn't join us this evening, Doreen Marberger, Andrew Miller, Jacob Faust, and Luke Hayman. And according to the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, finalists are typically less than 1% of high school seniors in the United States. So we want to congratulate them and their family members. So family members, if you could please stand up, because we think you had something to do with this. And along with the family members, we want to also congratulate Andy I., who's the Athletic Director at Central, Roderick Watson, Assistant Principal at South, and Kurt Yancey, Principal of North, who are in the audience, to be here cheering on the students from their schools this evening, or the alumni, sorry, the alumni from their schools. I have a graduating senior, so I got to get used to this alumni thing, but congratulations As they proceed through, I'd like to see if I can have Nabeha Ilkakor join me. Is Nabeha here this evening? Well, we're going to commend Nabeha anyway. The Ohio Association of Student Leaders, Nabeha recently graduated from South and was named the Ohio Association of Student Leaders Ambassador of the Year during the state conference. She's been involved in OASL since freshman year and served as a student president for OASL Executive Board this year. The OASL Ambassador Award recognizes students who actively participate in the Ohio Association of Student Leaders events throughout the school year and use their leadership skills to promote OASL and its ideals at their school. And Student Council Advisor Lauren Sefton wrote in her nomination of Nabeha, "She's been an advocate for OASL at South and often shares with peers the opportunities the association has afforded her, the connections she's been able to make, and how it has set her up for future success." So I want to congratulate Nabeha and Nabeha's family, as well as Roderick Watson, who's here, the Assistant Principal at South, who are in the audience this evening. So if you'd join me in a round of applause for Nabeha. And then also Anna Lamp, can you join me? You're here? So also, Anna, who's just graduated last month, congratulations, has been named the 2024 Ohio Representative in the National Distinguished Young Women's Scholarship Program. She'll represent all of Ohio at the national finals, which is in Mobile, Alabama later this month. The Distinguished Young Woman program promotes and rewards scholastics, leadership, and talent in high school girls. So I want to acknowledge Anna, Anna's family members. Any family members here? Please stand over there. As well as Andy I., yet again, the Athletic Director representing Central, who's here in the audience this evening. So congratulations. We're so proud of you and good luck in all of your next endeavors.
Thank you.
And, and, right, we love doing this, I'm just telling you. The Ohio Education Library Media Association's Read on Ohio Award for Teens. So now I'd like to call up Lila Mederer. Lila's a rising senior at Central, who's a... Oh, good, we get one back, yay. Who's a recipient of the Ohio Education Library Media Association's Read on Ohio Award for Teens. The award recognizes Ohio youth who demonstrate an enthusiasm for reading and enjoy being in school and our public library for its many services. Amy Ferris, the media specialist at Central, nominated Lila for the annual award for her true passion for reading. She was team captain of this year's Battle of the Books team, which placed second in the Ohio Capitol Conference Battle of the Books competition. She was recently elected as the student representative for the Friends of the Westerville Library Organization, that's awesome, and has served as school library student assistant and has a pulse on author events in Columbus. So I want to acknowledge Lila and Lila's family members, family members, yay. As well as Andy I., the Athletic Director at Central, who's representing the administration of the school here this evening. So congratulations to you again, and thank you for being a reading champion. So now, moving on to the 2024 Continental Math League Contest. So would the parents of Divya Trevetti please make their way up here with me? And I'd also like to invite Jackson Fisher, Silas Donovan, and Cam Jackson to join me up here up front. Come on up. Thanks for joining me up here. You're representing, right? Yeah, good job. He's repping. So these students are part of a sixth-grade team of advanced math students at Genoa Middle School, and that was the only national winner in their competition region in the 2024 Continental Math League Contest. Their team was one of a dozen national winners across the United States, and other members of the team include Gavin Troutman, Katie Beederman, and Hayes Kaufman. So for a few interesting facts about these students' performance, Silas Donovan and Gavin Troutman tied as the top scorers in the competition. Katie Beederman, Cam Jackson, Hayes Kaufman, and Divya Trevetti tied for second place, and Jackson Fisher finished third place. So it was really an exceptional showing by all these students. And I'd like to close by acknowledging the Genoa teachers who worked with them, Josh Delegati, Jamie Yader, and Pooja Shaw, and as well as all the family members of those who are in the audience. Family members? Family members? Family members? Stand up, congratulations. And their teachers. Teacher, oh, okay. There you go, teachers, thank you. Thank you. So awesome job. I'm going to shake your hand again, and please come on up and shake some more. Thank you for being here with us this evening. And as he moves through, I just want to thank everybody again for their tremendous achievements, and the staff and the families who support the kids and all the different things that they do. We have such incredible students, staff, and families, and we love to celebrate them. So thanks for being here on summer break, right, and after graduation, some of you. Thank you very much. Are we doing photos out there? Okay. So follow in for photos.
You sound much better.
Oh, I am. Oh, yeah.
Did you have to have another round of analiops? Next up, we have 4.01, our Magnet Update, and we welcome Ms. Relford, Ms. Toma, Ms. Baker, and Mr. Buer.
Good evening, President Meyer, Vice President Altman, members of the board, Mrs. Hamburg, and Mrs. Marshall, thanks for having us this evening. I am excited to stand before you to give you an update on our progress of our magnet work that we've been doing over the past two years, it seems like longer than that. And within our team, we'll all take an opportunity to talk you through where we are, where we started, and where we are in our efforts. And so just to bring, remind everyone that we started this work under the guise of a Magnet Review Committee, so that we could redesign or re, I think, redesign or reinstitute or reset our focus for both our magnet programs at both Hanby and Emerson. We also wanted to dig into our curricular focuses, focus for each building, and to align that work with our elementary curriculum and instruction committee, utilizing all board-adopted resources and materials.
Over the course of the last year, the district curriculum specialist and curriculum director, that would be me for K5, attended several staff meetings and TBTs, or teacher-based teams, to brainstorm, provide ideas or resources, and to support teachers with unit development. These conversations were really fun and allowed us to think about how we could use existing resources in new and exciting ways. We did have many stakeholders involved in this work, including classroom teachers, specials teachers, the instructional coach and school counselor. Families were involved, the PAST Foundation and the Educational Service Center of Central Ohio, including their project innovation side of the house, as well as the curriculum and instruction team. We tried to include many voices and different lenses in this work, and it allowed us to broaden our network with comments like, "I know someone who could," or "Have you thought about..." with just different people in different lenses. So I'm going to pause, because I know we really want to hear from the fearless, passionate leaders who led this work and see some pictures.
Hi. Thanks for the counseling, by the way. I got a moment to say it, elementary counseling every day, thank you. Emerson Magnet School, so we're inquiry-based learning, real culture, and fine arts. One of the first things we got to work with right away was determining what does inquiry look like at Emerson and generating what would be an Emerson-specific inquiry cycle that would start with sparking a student's curiosity, then they would get into exploring a different topic, ideally cultivating some of those questions, activating some of that critical thinking, then they would begin to create something, right? And that doesn't necessarily, for us, have to be a roller coaster as much as it could be a poem, as it could be a piece of literature, it could be a comic book. But when you think about the communication and collaboration that those type of things need, that's really where we're headed. Then an opportunity to reflect and revise, more confidence building, more opportunities for collaboration, and then ideally at the end, they create a finished product, they share, they publish, they act upon that to an authentic audience, really diving deep into, you know, an authentic assessment at an elementary level. So what are some of the outcomes of the work? We went into the goal with hoping that, the goal being that a classroom would pilot an inquiry unit by the end of this school year, and the design work would continue. I'm happy to say that every classroom designed and implemented an inquiry unit by the end of this school year, and some really great things came out of it. I've got some examples up here of first through fifth. One of the driving forces for these inquiry cycles are those inquiry questions that really began to stem and spark the curiosity for the students. I've got some examples up here of first through fifth. One of the driving forces for these inquiry cycles are those inquiry questions that really began to stem and spark the curiosity for the students. So in fifth grade, how do photographs, books, and artifacts help us learn about the past? In second grade, why is currency important in our society and our world? And I've got some, some photos that are kind of cool for this. Third grade, oceans. How do oceans impact our world, and how can we protect it? Fourth grade, what does it mean to have a great heart, both literally and figuratively? Which is kind of cool, too, because when you begin to tie in the cultural aspect of, you know, some African cultures, sometimes literally, you know, the community would be dictated by, hey, let's meet at the largest tree, right? And then the community would slowly grow from there. Some, some really great literal and figurative opportunities there. Fifth grade, home runs in high fashion. Fifth grade actually has an essential question that spans the entire year. How does art connect the past, present, and future? And then from that, fifth grade has broken it down into specific unit essential questions that drive it further. In this case, how can sports influence individuals and societies? As well as, did sports influence fashion, or did fashion influence sports? Again, in a way to infuse the fine arts within it. Got some great pictures for you there here. I'm gonna work from left to right. So on the left is first grade. So they took a, a big part of this is, you know, students creating shared experiences. They took a virtual field trip to Joshua Tree and spoke with Ranger Allison about different animals and habitats that may exist there. They had, below that, they had Franklin County water and soil come in. And they read Crawdade Creek, and there are different habitats within that creek, or within that, that, that display in front of them. And they would take, when they heard their animal, and they would put it in the right habitat that it belonged in during that story. Moving to the right, that's second grade market. So our students learned about currency, different currency from around the world, designed their own currency. And we had some conversations. In one classroom, I landed on the $20 bill, and one, I landed on the $1 bill. So we had to adjust the evaluation for the teacher that I landed on the $1 bill. But what students then did is they generated a list of questions they had about how do businesses work? And they broke into small groups and went and visited seven amazing businesses in Uptown Westerville, who opened their arms, brought them in, answered their questions, and then they went back and they designed their own business. The currency that they designed was then handed out to all students who visited their shops. And all the students got to go shopping. So it could be anything from maybe some made slime. There was a long, long wait in Mrs. Pugh's Spa. There was a lemonade stand, some were comic books, some were fortune tellers. It was very, very impressive what they were able to produce at the end of their inquiry cycle. Third grade discovering oceans. At the top there, they were putting together a timeline, the famous people that had happened in history, and where does that line up with some of their, that's their space unit, and where does that line up in space? Below that was third grade dissecting squids as part of their oceans unit, and looking into some of the tribes that live almost holistically on the water in different areas of the world. For lack of a better phrase, think Moana, you know, at the end of the movie. Pretty, pretty cool. To the right, notices and wonderings about Sudan and how they get, how some of the tribes there may get water and the difficulty it is to get water to and from and utilize it. As well as a great field trip out to the Cartoon Museum just offside of, just outside of Ohio State Campus to explore how words and feelings can be characterized and captured in picture form. And then down at the bottom was a great one. And this is fifth grade. They actually went to the mural outside of Heinz Schneider's and reached out to the artist there, Nick Stoll, asked him if maybe he'd stop by and meet the kids, and he did, and he gave a great presentation. He's not from Westerville, so he brought up notes, rather lengthy notes, to explain to them who Benjamin Handby was, you know? And any Westerville student that's above third grade knows who Benjamin Handby is. The kids chuckled a little bit, but then he took them on a really, really great walk of what all of the different pieces of his artwork meant and what they symbolized. And then actually came back and did the exact same artwork with the kids. And that's the picture you see on the bottom right there, which was a really great way to bring that back around and wrap that learning around. A lot of his artwork is about how does art influence the past, present, and future? And you can see that in his murals. So some really good opportunities for students to learn, some really good opportunities for students to show their learning while also really, really highlighting the questions and inquisitiveness that they have. Thank you.
Good evening. So at Handby, we are focused on STEAM. And STEAM is science, technology, engineering, the arts, and math. It doesn't necessarily mean that we are doing entire units based on how to build a bridge. It's instead talking about design thinking and scientific reasoning and building all of that into how we approach learning on a daily basis. And so we are working toward STEAM designation with ODE, and that involves a rubric. And it is a, it's a nice-sized rubric. And so we dissected the rubric and figured out that we wanted to start first in the teaching and learning section of it. And that means that we need to focus on what it means when we talk about project-based learning, because that is an integral part of the teaching and learning aspect of the rubric. And so we spent the year really learning what PBL is, getting common language around each of the essential elements of PBL, and then we were tying them to the educational framework. And so the goal for the year was to make sure, well, to pilot, to float at least one PBL in every classroom. And so we, we did that. And the really cool thing about this is Handby is two programs in one building, and everybody's doing it. And so we are creating a more cohesive culture through our STEAM focus, which is wonderful. And so we have some examples up here from each grade level. In first grade, we looked at driving questions. Driving questions are really essential questions. It's just driving questions is what we're going to use for our common language at Handby when we're talking about the overall focus and figuring out each benchmark and each piece of a PBL. And so first grade, what adaptations would a human need to mimic an animal or plant in order to survive in their habitat? Second grade focused on landforms and habitats and ecology. How could you convince someone to visit different landforms and experience the beauty and uniqueness of each one? Third grade focused on Westerville history. How do stories from the past in Westerville define who I am today? Fourth grade focused on myths and storytelling. And we said, how can we use our understanding of the essential elements of myth-based and fantasy storytelling to make our own stories? And then one of the questions in fifth grade was how can fifth graders address the problems of homelessness and food insecurity? So tying to economics. And so what we, I just, I have a bunch of pictures for you. And I will do what Chris did and move from left to right. And so we have our fourth graders on one side. Our fourth graders actually partnered pretty closely with the ESC Project Innovation. And we brought in 3D printers from the ESC. And so we had 3D printers running in our third floor for weeks. And they were creating artifacts that the students designed using the technology that goes with 3D printers. They created their own artifacts for the stories and the character development. And then with that, then they created some visual displays and talked through their stories for the other classes in the building. So that is the fourth grade presenting to other classes in Handby in our library. And then if you move over one, our first graders started figuring out what it means to do inquiry learning. What does it actually mean? How do we ask questions instead of having questions asked of us? And we did that by getting B-bots. And B-bots are little robots that are bees. And they code the robots and have them go on these big mats and do whatever they want them to do. And so you have on the top, that is when they actually figured out how to code. And they were moving the robots, the little bees. And the picture right below is they were designing their questions. And so it was really neat to see our first graders go from, oh, wait, I, I don't have to just answer questions. I'm going to ask the questions. So they were very excited. Second grade, we actually have several pictures here to kind of wrap around. Second grade did several different items. Before we get into their actual landforms, habitats, and ecology, they also partner with Generations. Partnerships are a big part of our designation, STEAM designation. And so that picture at the top where they're in their little red capes, that is their performance with Generations. And they, we worked with Generations, and then they presented at one of Generations' spring recitals. So that is at Westerville North, and they are doing a little red Riding Hood performance. And then down at the bottom, we have three pictures of the second graders. They're at Allen Creek Park, and they are learning about the ecology in the river. And then next to that is their actual landform presentation. And they also did their public product within Handby communities. So all of the different classes and grade levels were able to come and see what they did and ask questions and really give them those public speaking opportunities. And then we also have, we used our community garden right outside of Handby to further explore some of the different natural impacts and of ecology. So that's second grade. The picture right in the middle is third grade. They went to the works, and that's how they kind of did a launch for their inquiry-based unit. So they were involved in some design challenges at the works. And then fifth grade, another part of fifth grade was a question around designing a playground that is safe and entertaining for all of our students. And so they were building things to scale. So they brought in a bunch of cardboard and created their own games. And that was how they kind of played with that idea to figure out how to build structures that are safe and engaging for kids. And that's Handby. Our next steps, we are going to do a couple of retreats this summer to continue our work. We are going to build more PBLs, and that's going to help us get into developing our own design cycle. So we will have a Handby-specific design cycle that will flesh out the rest of the teaching and learning aspect of the STEAM designation rubric. Thank you.
So that was a lot to take in, but as you can tell, we're excited about the work that we've been able to do in partnership with Handby and Emerson. One thing that you heard Kaylee mention, and Chris, at Emerson, things were intertwined in their framework that totally aligned with our educational framework that we're using across the district. All of the units and all of this work is built upon our grade-level standards and board-adopted curriculum and materials. So we're using that as the foundation of the learning experiences that we prepare. And so now, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
So, of course I do. So how does this work with like bridges and other pieces of curriculum? So how do you embed these pieces into it?
I'm gonna have Chris and Kaylee talk about how they've done it, because this year, based upon the work from the committee, they've had firsthand experience watching that happen in motion. So I'd like for them to tell you a little bit about it.
So right now, we're not infusing bridges into this work at Emerson. Being real culture, fine art, math is a bit of a standalone. Down the line, we just had conversations even this morning where we think that there may be opportunities to infuse math in some of the cultural pieces when you begin to explore maybe what some of the cultural recipes and other things may be in getting into fractions. But at this stage in it, we're at Emerson mainly focused on ELA and social studies.
So give me some examples of those pieces of curriculum that you're kind of infusing in there then.
Sure. So when you kind of examine, like, let's say, fifth grade, what they'll do is run a Native American unit, still utilize the standards that are outlined in Witten Wisdom. But then we were fortunate enough to have a resident artist in with us this year who was working in the classrooms specifically to try to design art projects in the classroom that supported the work. She brought in and connected the classroom teacher to a Native American artist who Skyped in. And then we were able, the students and the teacher were able to implement an art project that overlaid with that, which should check both their social studies and their ELA standards. The big framework piece for us throughout this was ensuring that as we build these units out, have we captured the standard as needed? And again, ELA and social studies. And the rigor that's intended in this said standard. And then if not, there may be an opportunity or a necessity to have a three-day mini lesson, because we just don't have an answer to that standard as it fits within the inquiry model that we have. As we're operating now, bridges is that piece in its own entity. We, we don't have an answer for it yet, but hopefully it's down the line.
Yeah. Thank you.
And similar to Emerson, we are, we're not focused yet on creating totally transdisciplinary PBLs and design cycle and those types of pieces. We will get there. This year was more focused on pick a subject, pick a standard, and try to build a PBL off of that. So you do see a lot of science in this. And science is a natural place to do that, because mystery science serves as a launch point. And it is inquiry-based in many of its facets anyway. So that is a great resource, and then they just build off of that, and they connect other pieces as they're going through it. But not all of it was science. We did do some Witten Wisdom fourth, fourth grade focused on Module Four in Witten Wisdom, and that was kind of the focus for their PBL and how they built off of it. But when we get into, I mean, before I get there, fifth grade focused on measurement scale, those types of things. So they were pulling from elements of math. But what we look at it as is we are using the curricular resources to build that foundational knowledge. It doesn't necessarily happen linearly. So what you're doing is you can use it as a launch for some of it, but then you come back and you do mini lessons, and you build it in. You may compact a little bit of it because of the time aspect that it takes to do PBLs, but you build that way. And so it's coming back to it throughout the PBL unit development, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. And I really appreciate that. So Witten Wisdom and Bridges, great pieces of curriculum, but we have experts here, our teachers, that probably know the best way to deliver curriculum where kids are gonna get the most out of it. So I like the flexibility. I love seeing the pictures of all the sweats happening. It makes me feel like I'm there and part of it. It's exciting. I bet the kids love it. I bet the staff loves it. Well done.
Thank you.
Well done.
Can I make a comment?
Okay. The layering and the weaving together of district-approved resources, our educational framework, all of the components that make up the district curricular focus. Moving all of that into the redesign and the magnets is not easy work. And I commend the staff, everyone who's involved. And Kate, you were talking about all of those individuals who are involved, wrestling with what is not an easy, an easy task. You know, when we talk about, and Cheryl, you were talking, it's been two years, and we have, we, I haven't been involved at all. You all have done massive amounts of work in that amount of time to develop that depth and breadth of understanding relationship of how to create difference within standardization. And I commend you for that. That is one of the most difficult tasks. It is wonderful and fun and so energizing to have great ideas. But bringing them into life within a necessary structure, that's where things can get sideways. And they've not. So thank you for that. This is so exciting. And I'm also, I want to commend both buildings, both staffs, for the intentional relationship with the community. There's been a lot of talk about the engagement with Uptown businesses, Uptown artists. That's hugely important as our community owns these schools. And that engagement and that connection can only be a wonderful resource for the children and the community as well. Congratulations on the work thus far, and I'm really looking forward to see where this goes.
Thank you.
I'll just add, I, I know we had asked you guys to go back and to think about all of this again and make sure that it's standardized and consistent across the board. And I, I want to say thank you. As my colleagues have said, a lot of work has gone into this, and it's really fantastic. I'm curious to see, or to hear. I know Ms. Baker had said, you know, what's next for next year? And so I'm curious, what is, what does that look like in each of the buildings next year? What, what can parents expect to, to see as we continue to build on this?
So what we would expect to see moving forward for both buildings? Both buildings are doing a summer PD where they're working with their teachers to extend that creation of units to be implemented for the next school year. I would envision that PD is gonna go all year long. And by this time next year, we should have a map of units to cover all year long for the next school year. We are building it as we go. As Dr. Nestor Baker mentioned, it does take a lot of time when you're building from the standards and curriculum, and you're stretching and extending for students. And then, Mrs. Davidson, you did ask about bridges. So the thing that has also come out of this work is you, we're not doing inquiry-based learning. learning and PBL learning STEAM every day, all day. And so there are pieces and parts of that time that is really focused on that, that methodology of how we provide that experience for students. And then there are other times where they're teaching using Bridges curriculum, just as any other teacher across the district. So there's a combination of things happening in our buildings with an aligned focus specific to Emerson and Hamby. And that's exciting.
Truly is. Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry. Oh, I love it. So as somebody who was in on some of the, excuse me, early meetings with Hamby as you were developing this, I'm wondering if, you know, I want to thank you for how far it's come, how much work it's been and that the different schools have been developing these things, you know, in communication, but something that works for each community. And so I'm wondering, you know, I think to a lot of people who might listen, it's project based learning, inquiry based learning, you know, STEAM, world arts and fine arts. Like can you tell us like, how's the experience different between the buildings, right? And you know, like where they are today and where they're headed. So for a family that say a year from now, I mean, use your crystal ball a little bit, trying to decide what box to check for the magnet program, what would the difference be?
I think the difference is exactly what you explained. And so the lived experiences for students varies based upon what the focus is for each building. It is hands-on, they are diving in and exploring with the learning as it pertains to inquiry based or project based learning. The different grade levels, I mean, it's grown more than what we originally thought. Grade levels are doing something specific that pertains to their grade level standards. And so I think what we want families to understand is it's how we approach the learning for students varies, but both lend themselves into an inquiry exploratory way of learning and growing as students explore.
Thank you. That's one of the things that I really appreciate and I'm super old and I've been around for a long time in this district is that there was a time when people had a sense that, I'm just going to say it, we couldn't get a lot of boys to sign up for the arts magnet program. People, you know, there was just this perception that the boys should be doing math science mostly and the girls should be doing arts. And I think one of the things that I really love about this is it shows that all kids, right, really respond to hands-on stuff. Even back then, if you walked into Hamby, which was arts, it was just kids doing things. And that's what we see here and walking into the buildings when this is happening, kids are so excited. So I just want to thank you for that. And I think it's just shown that like all children, all kinds of children love to do stuff and learn this way. So thanks.
And so if I could just toot their horn for just a second. So both Chris and Kaylee have done a really good job at the building level with putting information out so that the community and stakeholders are aware of the work. I had the opportunity of visiting both open houses and our interest for magnet programs is significantly increasing. I'm looking to Chris because he had the number the last time, what was our total? Two hundred and eighty applicants this year. And that was an increase of almost a hundred, I think, almost a hundred students. So we're excited that the interest is there and it is growing. And I think it's because people have a better understanding of what our focus is and what we can offer to our students entering the magnet programs.
Great. Thank you all. Thank you. Next up, we have the superintendent's report, Ms. Hamburg.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to share a few things. First of all, thank you to the team that just presented. I really appreciate all your work there. Wanted to give the board and the community a quick update on our strategic planning process. So we have been meeting quite a bit and working on that plan and the objectives. So a huge thank you to our committee and to our leadership team and the extra work that's gone into that. We do have a meeting with the committee on Wednesday and so we are taking back some draft objectives to the committee to look over and give us some feedback. Our teaching and learning team has been instrumental in kind of helping us reframe those backs so they kind of fit in a little bit better with our educational framework, which you also saw presented in the magnet update. And we're really happy with where that is headed. So if everything goes well on Wednesday, we are still planning on presenting you with a draft prior to the meeting on June 24th, which we will ask you to approve. And this will be the priorities for the district along with the objectives of work in each of those areas. But then we will be working with the impact group, with our team to kind of flesh out a little bit more the actual steps, the timeline, who's responsible, and then that'll be a plan that we will manage obviously and give you regular updates on. So it's taken a little bit of extra meetings and things in there to kind of get it where we wanted, but we wanted to make sure it was a usable document that really reflected where we were headed. So we'll plan to have that to you in the next probably week and a half to be presented at our meeting on the 24th. I wanted to thank Ann and Cheryl and their teams, especially Jen and Kate. The elementary and secondary principals have been working in retreats and those ladies have been leading them with digging into their data, with working on implementing MTSS for next year. Appreciate Tammy and her team also participating in that. So they've been putting a lot of time in. Thank you to our principals, just really digging into their data and coming up with plans. And I've just been really happy to see all the collaboration between the different buildings. So we're really working on that and appreciate their time and effort there. And then I wanted to share a, kind of a community celebration, a shout out to Becca Yanni and her team. As Mr. Dorm pointed out in an email that he sent us, we worked on bringing the instruments to our fifth graders instead of having them have to go out in the evening. So really trying to remove that barrier and having a more equitable approach to kids getting interested in instruments. So with that, our orchestra registration for sixth grade has gone up 154%. So we have 699 students in sixth grade that are interested in being in orchestra and our band numbers are up 57% with 694. So I think that's super exciting for those kids to have that opportunity. Becca put a lot of time into that, so I appreciate her work there. And then the other big celebration on a related note is you may have seen we had an instrument drive and there was a drop off during the Fourth Friday in front of Hamby. And so far, we have a few more instruments and values coming in, but we have over $10,000 worth of instruments that were donated by our community. So a huge thank you for that generosity. And those are instruments that will help kids who may otherwise not be able to afford to play. So again, thank you to everyone for that. And that's all I have to share tonight. Happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Just if anybody watching wants to donate an instrument or money to cover an instrument.
No, they accept it, absolutely.
And they should reach out to Becca Yanni?
Yeah, Becca or any, here at the office, we can put them in touch.
Awesome. Thanks.
Thank you.
Great stuff. Thank you. Wow. Next up, we have approve the minutes of the regular board. So can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting held on Monday, May 20th of 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, discussions, comments? Okay.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
I'm going to abstain since I wasn't here. Next up, we have a public comment and we have one. And I'm going to call Ms. Debra Bergman up to the podium and just remind you that you will have five minutes to address the board. Any timer will be shown on the screen. Welcome.
Good evening, President Meyer, Vice President Altman, members of the board, Ms. Marshall and Superintendent Hamburg. I am Deb Bergman. I'm an ESL paraprofessional at Genoa Middle School. I've come to offer comments on agenda item number 8.12, the MOU between WESA and the Board for EL Paraprofessionals. Dimension three of Westerville City Schools Board of Education Strategic Plan states, student learning is driven by recruiting, developing and retaining highly effective and skilled staff members. The paraprofessionals serving this district's English language learners assist in making complex content area instruction accessible to this district's students who are often adjusting to new cultural and social norms while acquiring the academic vocabulary and literary skills required to be successful learners. Some of us are speakers of multiple languages, but none of us can speak all 65 languages that 1,532, 37 students speak. Reinforcing and explaining academic material while supporting language development requires creativity, background knowledge, patience and perseverance. I implore you to consider what kind of staff you want to attract and retain for such positions. I ask you to please consider providing benefits and salary to the paraprofessional staff that reflects the excellence our students deserve. I want to put a face on one of the names in the MOU that's presented to you tonight. I think that it's sad that after 18 years of working as an ESL paraprofessional in this district, no one has even spoken to me about what is happening to my job. I am grateful that I will stay at the current benefit level. I work two jobs to support myself and there is no way I could afford to pay the part-time level premiums. In 2025, I will lose 117 hours a year. At my rate of $27.80, that is a loss of $3,252.60, about $272 a month. Effectively, it's an 8% pay cut. That may not seem like much, but it's half of my grocery budget. Someone has actually said to me, at least they're giving you a year to find another job. Well, at 63, I don't think anyone's likely to be in a hurry to hire me. And quite frankly, I don't want to leave. I love what I do. I love my students. In any case, the institutional knowledge and experience that I possess, along with my proven track record of improving student performance and wellbeing, would seem to be worth retaining, as it is with many of my colleagues. To recruit and retain effective personnel, Westerville City Schools will need to provide competitive salaries and benefits. To raise a group's hours to just below the threshold that qualifies them for benefits at a manageable cost would seem to speak volumes about how the district regards those positions. When you adjust hours and benefits, please consider recognizing the value of all the educational support personnel who are dedicated and skilled employees and who contribute so much to every student's academic success. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up is financials and we have none. And can we take all of the personal consent agenda as one? All right. May I have a motion to approve the personal consent agenda 8.01 through 8.13?
So moved.
Second.
Welcome, Mr. Cooper.
Good evening, President Meyer, Vice President Altman, members of the board, Ms. Marshall and Inter Superintendent Hamburg. This evening's personnel consent agenda includes action items with regard to resignations, retirements, leaves of absence, contract status changes, one-time pays and other employment and union-related decisions. We have two staff members who have announced their retirement on this evening's agenda. Susan Klein is retiring after 22 years of service to our district and Mary Ann Troutman after 35 years of service to our district here. We appreciate all they've done for our students, staff and community and wish them the best in their retirement years ahead. Under 8.07, it is recommended the board approve the contract status changes for several EL paraprofessionals to a standardized seven hours per day at five days per week. Our EL department has been working through changes to our elementary service model, which requires the addition of teaching positions and adjustment to paraprofessional services at some of our elementary schools. EL paraprofessionals at adjusted buildings are being reassigned to other positions within the district and in doing so, we have standardized all EL paraprofessional hours in a way that improves support for our students and at all levels, elementary, middle and high school. The MOA with the Westerville Education Support Staff Association, or WESA, associated with this item in 8.12, allows our staff members currently over 35 hours to keep hours for one more year and benefit eligibility indefinitely. Further, the MOA details the process for any EL paraprofessionals being reassigned to another building. Lastly, under item 8.13, it is recommended the board approve an MOA with WESA regarding a $3 per hour increase to all current and future health aides who hold an LPN or RN license. This increase ensures a competitive wage for these vital supports for our students. At this time, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions?
A couple of procedural issues. When an individual's work is, work assignment is being impacted by these sorts of agreements, what is the notification process?
Yeah, so specifically with the EL paraprofessionals, in this case, we did meet with all. We offered a meeting to our EL professionals, of which I believe the vast majority, if not all, attended. We had the opportunity to share the information as to what the changes would be and then an opportunity to follow up with questions as well as our contacts so that they had additional questions that we could speak with them. Looking at this specific change, because it would look at a reduction of some hours and pay, we wanted to give time for that ability for staff members who would be impacted with less pay or less hours to be able to have some time to make that adjustment.
Thank you.
I do want to note with that as well, it is an overall increase of services to our students. And looking at that model and spending a lot of time, and I do want to give a lot of credit to Jennifer Winters as the coordinator for our EL department. She has looked at that in increasing the amount of supports that we provide through our certified teachers as well. We are looking at adding 10 elementary teachers to our elementary buildings as well as a middle school and a high school teacher to support our students. And in doing so, that's allowed us an opportunity to really look at all of our paraprofessionals to look at where they can best support our students. That has increased overall the amount of hours of support beyond the teachers, the hours of support that our paraprofessionals will provide as well.
Mark, do you know how many paraprofessionals this will impact? And I know this is like, yeah.
Yeah, the list is under action number 8.07, the specific list of people that will change in their hours. I believe there are 12 EL professionals in that list, right around there.
Out of how many?
Goodness, you caught me on that one. I'm not really sure how many total we have. And that would be a good question for Carly if she was here tonight, as she works primarily with the classified staff members. But I could certainly get that number to you.
Okay. Thank you.
And, excuse me, I just want to be clear in my understanding that, and I'm pretty much just reading here from the text, but I want to make sure I understand that we have five EL paraprofessionals who currently qualify for insurance and will continue to qualify for insurance, even though their hours are being reduced, those five, right?
Correct.
And they are then the only five that will qualify for insurance benefits?
They are qualified indefinitely. So with that hours change, we'll continue to qualify for.
As long as they work.
Correct.
For the district.
Correct. That is what the MOA specifically calls out.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
One thing just to note, with that standardization, we do have some employees who just worked four days a week. So part of what Jennifer was trying to align was making sure that everybody was five days a week. So we had that support each day that the students are here. So that was, some people were increased and some were decreased to get those standard hours across the board.
Any other questions or discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Next up, we have old business and we have none. Similar Next up, we have old business, and we have none, simulating long to new business and the first reading of policy twenty-six point, or twenty-six twenty-three, Student Assessment and Academic Intervention Services. And welcome, Mr. MacLeone.
Thank you, President Meyer. Good evening, Ms. Hamburg, Ms. Marshall, esteemed members of the board, on this lovely summer-ish night, feels a little bit more like fall, and the students should be back at this time. But hopefully everyone's having a great evening. It is my pleasure to present to you the first reading of revisions to Board Policy Twenty-Six Twenty-Three for Student Assessment and Academic Intervention Services. This policy is recommended for language revisions due to changes in Ohio Revised Code and recommendations from NEOLAs. Most of it's pretty just simple kind of word changes, but there is a new requirement from the state that does mandate that we have to send to parents student assessment results by June thirtieth of each year. So this is brand-new that's going in here. Other than that, everything else is just kind of keeping us updated with current law, with Ohio Revised Code, and making sure that our policies are accurate with that. At this time, I can take any questions that any of the members might have.
Any questions?
Do you anticipate any difficulty complying with the June thirtieth requirement?
We have had to change up some things, and we are very blessed to have an amazing person in our office by the name of Ms. Brandy Pollens, who is really a wizard with spreadsheets and getting data extrapolated from the state website. So what really, we were kind of hammering on in late July, we've had to tweak some things, and we're getting that ready in June. We're looking at sending out probably towards the end of this week about eleven thousand student testing results, due to the hard work and what she's been able to do and kind of pull together through mail merges and a lot of things that I couldn't even try to do.
Any other questions? Now we have the third grade reading guarantee.
Yeah, thanks for having me back. With this, it is my pleasure to present the first reading of revisions to Board Policy Twenty-Six Twenty-Three Point O Two for the Third Grade Reading Guarantee. This policy is recommended for language revisions due to changes in Ohio Revised Code and some recommendations from NEOLAs. Most of these revisions are just some general wording stuff, but they do reflect the current Ohio law and the current Revised Code, so the updates are needed to make sure that we have accurate policies. And I'll be more than willing to take any questions that anybody might have at this time.
Any comments, questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. MacLeone.
Thank you so much.
Next up, we have the first reading of policy sixty-two. I need some glasses. Sixty-two, ten point zero one, cash balance. Ms. Marshall?
Thank you, President Davidson, or President Meyer and members of the board. So this is a new policy that you have in front of you this evening. For cash balance and reserves is the title of the policy. It looks like I didn't get that on the title of the agenda. I apologize for that. So like I mentioned, it is a new policy. We worked with our finance committee to develop this policy, and it includes maintaining a minimum of ninety days, true days cash balance in our general operating fund, which is common practice around the state of Ohio. This is being recommended to have a policy and look at reserves as well as cash balances by the Ohio Association of School Business Officials, the Ohio School Boards Association, and the Buckeye Administrators, Buckeye, I'm, for schools. School Administrators, sorry, Association of School Administrators. So this will be the first reading, and if there are any changes, feel free to reach out, and we can come back at the next meeting.
Next up, we have the first reading from elementary, curriculum and ELA, Social Studies, Health, Music, Library, and welcome, Ms. Turner.
Thank you. Good evening, President Meyer, Vice President Altman, members of the board, Ms. Marshall, and Interim Superintendent Hamburg. I'm here with lots of exciting updates. I want to talk about our ELA revisions for grades three, four, and five. At grade three, we needed to make some revisions to meet the legislative requirement for phonics instruction at grade three. We also worked with a stakeholder group last school year on our wit and wisdom curriculum and kind of continued that with the teacher group this past year. And so based on teacher feedback, with an almost unanimous vote of twenty-six to one, they elected to go with requiring three modules for wit and wisdom instead of four. The intended purpose of this is to provide teachers more time for small group intervention and enrichment. The rigorous pace of wit and wisdom was not leaving our teachers enough time to intervene with our students the way they would like to. Based on that teacher feedback, we are requiring three modules. However, some teachers were not having the same needs in their classrooms, so a teacher may choose to do all four modules or do three modules. It's up to the classroom teacher based on their student needs. We also looked at alternate texts for each of the grade levels and kind of threw that out to the teachers, how were the texts meeting the needs of their students, and did they want any revisions to that? Grade three did not want to pursue any alternate texts for their modules. Grades four did decide to offer two alternate texts, so teachers can choose which text is the main novel for a module. So at grade four, they were using Hatchet, and they can continue to use Hatchet, or they can choose to use the book Alone in the Woods by Rebecca Behrens. They also chose to have an alternate text option for Woods Runner, which is written by Gary Paulson as well, and they chose Taliber's Secret by Esther Wood Brady as an alternate text. So again, those teachers can decide based on the students, based on what their class needs, which text they want to be their primary novel for those modules. Grade five also wanted to pursue an alternate text. At grade four, Great Minds, the company who writes Wit and Wisdom, had already produced all the teacher materials and the alternate text options, so fourth grade was kind of good to go. They are not rewriting any alternate texts for fifth grade and don't have plans to. However, the teachers still felt that they wanted to have an alternate text for the novel The River Between Us by Richard Peck. And so after reading several novel choices, they decided on Bull Run by Paul Fleishman. The teachers are going to come together to write that teacher component piece that we don't currently have. That work will take place over, starts in the summer and will continue into the fall so that next school year, fifth grade teachers will have an alternate text and all the teaching resources that they need for that fifth grade alternate text choice. So those were the ELA updates. For social studies, last year I came to you, and they were looking at the Curriculum Resource Savvis, and that committee decided that they did not want to pursue Savvis after trying out some of the lessons and living with it a little bit. And so the committee went back to the drawing board, and Studies Weekly, which was previously used in grades three through five, had done a lot of updates, and we wanted to relook at that with the updates that they had provided, as well as looking at using it at K two. Previously, the social studies resource was Scholastic News, which meets a lot more ELA standards and language arts standards than it does social studies standards. And so we needed to have some conversation about, is that really the teaching resource we want for social studies at the K two level, or do we want to look at the Studies Weekly content? So that teacher group came together and decided that they did want to pursue the Social Studies Weekly as a resource at the K five level, so that is one change that's happening. And then they embedded a lot of anchor texts, and then did a kind of a look at what resources are in the district in terms of, we're going to need updated maps and globes because those haven't been updated in quite a while. And so those are some pieces that will come with that social studies course of study work. My favorite was health. We had a small but mighty committee of six teachers working on our health course of study. And just as a reminder, the state does not have adopted state health standards because they are not allowed to by law. However, they do provide some resources that you can choose from. So that group of mighty teachers really relied heavily on the Ohio Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance, which was a recommended resource by ODEW. So they have revised all of K five courses of study. There's a couple of things I want to note. We did write into the course of study the components of Senate Bill Two Eighty-eight, so I've already spent lots of time talking to you about Senate Bill Two Eighty-eight, which was the child sexual abuse and prevention requirement. That was one lesson that was taught by school counselors this past spring. Jesse Martin met with the school counselors at the April We Day and kind of debriefed, how did it go, what needs tweaked or changed? And so Jesse and I will have that follow-up conversation here in the near future, but we do feel like for our first year, we did a good job. So that got written into the course of study, but it is called out that this is one lesson taught by our school counselors. We also identified kind of a gap in our instruction for grades four and five. We were no longer teaching human growth and development, and they were going straight on to venereal diseases at middle school. So we felt like we needed to address that, and I was lucky enough to partner with Tammy and her team. And so the nurses, the counselors, and Heather Griffith, our health, science, and math curriculum specialists, have kind of been looking for resources and pulling together, what do we want the human growth and development lessons at fourth and fifth grade to include? And we're currently doing that work now over the summer. Again, it's a very fun, exciting project to collaborate on. I do plan to bring those lessons and materials back to you so that you can look at them. We want to make it as transparent as possible for our families so that they have the opportunity to review what content will be taught to their children. In addition, we left on even the K one, two, and three courses of study, human growth and development will be taught in fourth and fifth grade, so families have plenty of time to have those conversations with their children at home if they would like to. So those are some exciting health updates with a new course of study. I was also, had a lot of fun working with all of the related arts teams, so I worked with library, music, PE, and art. And art and PE are really close, but they had a few things they wanted to take back to their teams. And so I'm bringing music to you tonight, and they have decided to use the resource Purposeful Pathways in all of our music classrooms pending your approval. We do have new fine art standards in Ohio which were scheduled to be adopted last year, and there was a delay on that, so we used the national standards, which luckily is what the state adopted, so it does align with, thank goodness, right, after all that work? So they are very excited to have a standard resource across all of our music classrooms. We did look at resources and materials in our music instruction and identified some planning pieces for replacing xylophones and some other things that we need to look at. Library Media Course of Study was also revised. They had new standards that hadn't been updated as well, and so they came together as a group and were able to finish their course of study, tying in some more components for the technology and media side than were previously in their standards. So we've done a lot of great work at the K five level. I'll take any questions that you guys have.
Any questions?
So you said one teacher was not on board. Was it, tell me why?
It was an anonymous vote at that point, so that person never had to claim why. I think some of the teachers were more comfortable teaching four, and they didn't feel like their students needed it reduced. I do think they felt better, we were looking for that balance of teacher choice, too.
Yeah.
We knew we were going to meet all the standards with the modules we'd selected, but if I had to guess, I would say that that person didn't feel their students needed an adjustment.
So we were flexible, and now they can.
Correct.
Well done.
I just wanted to note that I'm glad that you guys are looking at, going back to teaching some of those health topics in fourth and fifth grade. My boys are rising seventh graders, and I'm like, what do you mean? You haven't talked about this stuff yet.
Yeah.
So I am very happy to hear that that will be making its way back into the curriculum with full transparency to everybody involved.
We are as well.
All right. And just to follow up on that, the sharing of those resources, those health resources, what will that look like? If you could just go into a little more detail.
Yeah, so I think that that's still pending because we're looking at a lot of different resources, and some of them may have copyright or not copyright, and so we're just trying to look at what we end up selecting. Our goal is that we're kind of taking different pieces and parts from the resources we've found, looking at other local districts, looking at health organizations, different pieces and parts. Our goal is to build something internal that we can publish, but I don't want to promise that until we have nailed down kind of what we're going to choose.
Yep, but there'll be an opportunity.
Yes, definitely.
Down the road a little bit.
Yep.
For folks to see what.
I think Senate Bill Two Eighty-eight taught us some good strategies for trying to make sure that our families know what we're instructing in those more sensitive areas.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Yep.
So building upon that, if anybody wanted to go and look at all of the curriculum changes or all the curriculum, where could they go?
So on our website, you can go and access any of our courses of study as soon, hopefully these will be approved, and then I will post these on the website right away so that families have access to read through. All of our text titles are on there, all of our resources. Westerville had already, before I came, done a wonderful job of posting all of their curriculum resources out there for families to read, so I will continue that tradition.
And this is a first reading, so they would approve it the next one, and then you would be able to post them, right?
Correct. Yep.
I just want to say, following up on what my colleague said, too, is I heard mixed things about wit and wisdom, and I really appreciate the fact that you guys work together to try to figure out the best path forward, so thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have secondary curriculum, and welcome, Ms. Knapp.
Hi there. Good evening, President Meyer, Vice President Altman, board members, and fellow administrators. In alignment with our curriculum and adoption process, well, if I may, can I just kind of start with math and just check in as we go? Okay. We are requesting new resources to support Algebra One in middle school and high school. We also have updated Algebra Two, Honors Algebra Two, to align to Ohio's learning standards, and Financial Algebra to have a stronger focus on real-world applications. So with Financial Algebra, that's one of the choices that we have as a fourth-year math for our students. So not every student takes that. Every student takes Algebra One, Geometry, and Algebra Two. So the Algebra One teachers are recommending Desmos Algebra One as the core resource. Teachers have been piloting resources, and it offers opportunities to collaborate, and it supports the mathematical practices, which is really huge when we talk about, especially high school math, which tends to be, you know, a little bit more traditional. This really incorporates those mathematical practices that our previous resource also did. About ten percent of the time, the instruction is paper pencil. The other ten percent of the time, it's one-to-one for students as they will be doing all of their assessments online. And then the bulk of the course is for students to be working in pairs, which is a two-to-one student-to-device ratio, which is what we currently have in our secondary buildings. This two-to-one opportunity will allow students to collaborate, as it is important to support the mathematical practices, specifically making sense of problems and persevering and solving them, and constructing viable arguments and critiquing the reasoning of others. One of the missing pieces from our previous resource is that online assessment component. Having the assessments online for students will help better to prepare them for the Ohio State Tests and online college entrance exams, so completing assessments online in Algebra One will be a new experience for our students. That is something that our teachers, while many teachers liked CPM, especially more toward the end of the adoption, it was very paper pencil-heavy, and it didn't allow students an opportunity to interact with math in an online environment, like moving the graphs and flipping things and translations, and this will give them that experience, and that's something that our teachers felt was missing. They do everything paper pencil, and then they show up for the Ohio State Test or their ACT and have to do everything online, and that was just not beneficial to the kids. So that was one of the reasons. Also, with the updated course of study in Financial Algebra, the teachers and students will be using the New Generation Personal Finance, which are free online resources for our teachers. I would like to share, this was facilitated by the recently retired Michael Hewler, and the teachers who participated in this and made these selections at Central, David Ray, Rebecca Ricobono, Jerry McSward, Stephanie Shaw, Angela Miller, and Rachel Schumate; North, John Boyd, Elena Green, Eric Nelson, Ashley Young, and Debbie Rosenstiel; and at South, Dave Schultz, Devin Duse, Chris Walker, Kevin Freeman, Melissa Paletta, Cassandra Gutierrez, and Stephen Colette; and then at our middle schools were our Algebra One teachers, Sean Bonig, Brittany Farrell, Joe Waltman. Joe Waltman, Diane Blaine, and Stephen Chandler. So those were all part of the committees to do this work. So questions before I go on to, I can't read that from here, ELA, I think?
So I do have a question.
Sure.
So before Algebra One, when they're in middle school, whatever math they're taking, is that also paper pencil or online?
I missed the very beginning, I'm so sorry.
So when they take Algebra One.
Yes, that is paper pencil. Now, we do have teachers who do some of the things on Schoology, but it is limited in what it can do when it comes to math.
So when they get to high school, this will be their first time that they're doing math with a computer?
In the same sense, for assessment specifically. And I think that's a good learning opportunity for us to say, okay, now that we're not in a high-stakes test environment, let's try a quiz online and let's work through how we can best facilitate that learning opportunity. But they will be doing lessons along the way online, but really our resources for mathematics with not being one-to-one, some of our teachers have been hesitant to utilize computers in mathematics rooms specifically. You know, they're like, okay, well, a calculator is enough that is needed for math. So this will be new for our students in this, to this degree.
Okay. So you're saying as they take Algebra One, the homework or whatever they're doing in class would be their first opportunity to complete math problems online, correct?
Well, and we also have adopted like math, Delta Math, and some of that is done online. You can watch videos. That isn't the core resource, however.
And so where's that at, though? Like, is that in middle school?
That is all, that is nine through 12. We have Delta Math. And we also have iReady, which is online. Again, that's not our core material. That isn't what, in sixth grade, it is our core material. But when we utilize those, like the math, the My Path lessons, they are doing some math online, yes. But it isn't the core resource. So it's a little different.
So you mentioned two-to-one, but then there's assessments one-to-one or two-to-one currently. So just for people at home, how does that work when, when they have to all use a computer?
Well, fortunately, we are moving toward one-to-one, so that is great news. But that's conversations and actually Tim Stifler has went to at least one of our high schools to have the conversation of, okay, when this happens, how do we work together? And, you know, obviously not every student would take the same Algebra One test on the same day, but then how do we share the resources as we move toward one-to-one? So actually, this is really good timing. This is something, this particular resource is actually something our math teachers have really been interested in for the past several years, but have been a little hesitant with the amount of devices that we have. So they know that it's, they know that they're going to have to have some collaborative conversations and they're prepared for those and they know that it will only get better when it comes to the student-to-device ratio.
Thank you. And just to clarify for some that might think Financial Algebra, it might fulfill the financial literacy?
That's good to bring up. Yes, it is very math-focused and does not align to the financial literacy standards that have been very explicitly articulated in, by ODEW.
Thank you.
So I'm going to back up one more second. I'm so sorry. So just thinking about the last time we implemented this big curriculum and we were working in groups and it was a little bit of a hard start, right? Parents felt a little blindsided. Is there a way that we could somehow prep our parents and kids for what's coming? Because I think a lot of people feel like this is really high stakes and don't want their kids to be guinea pigs. Not that that's what they are, but I think it's perceived that way.
Okay.
So, and I don't even know how that could happen, but see a little bump in the road there.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions before I move on to ELA? Okay, thank you. So this year, our six through 10 ELA teachers were very excited to update their courses of study and select new materials. Yet, under Ohio Revised Code, the Department of Education and Workforce was to establish a list of high-quality core curriculum and instructional materials in ELA. So we hit the pause button, thinking, okay, well, we don't want to ask for a core text and then it not be something that was on the list that ODE provided. After waiting a few months, ODE came out with a list and said, oh, we're actually only providing a list of core resources for K five. Like, huh, okay. And We Day was three days ago. That's awesome. So we realized that we weren't going to be able to bring forth to you a new course of study, given that we had taken just too long of a pause. So we will be bringing that forward to you in the coming school year. But work that the team continued to do, which is something that we've been working on for years, was to develop a list of recommended literary and informational texts that may be used for whole-group instruction. So it was similar to what Ms. Toma was saying when she said, okay, well, we have these books that teachers can use, you know, per unit for choice. In our previous course of study, we did have two, at least in ninth grade, like, everybody has to teach these two books. And we really wanted to move away from that. We had that in, in some of our other grades as well. And so what this does is it widens the book choices that teachers can do for that whole-group read. So, and over the past several years, teachers have participated in professional learning to sustain and support an inclusive and equitable learning environment. And this book list includes previously required texts as well as additional books as we sought to have a wider range of books for our student readers. What is great about this list as well is it does give an explanation of the book. It gives an overview. And if you click on the link, which will live in our, the secondary space that Kate alluded to earlier, then you'll be able, you click on it and it shows all of the standards that the particular book is aligned to. Now, we know and we work with our six, 12 ELA teachers or any teacher that's choosing to use a novel or, you know, another text, is to be transparent with our families to say, here's the book list, here's where you can find it. But as, as transparent as we can be, that is our goal. Because previously, we just put the name of the book at the last page on the course of study or maybe on the third page of the course of study, really difficult to find. So we're calling this out specifically, having links so that you can go to book reviews and things like that. So again, just trying to inform our parents as much as possible about the content of the books that are chosen. And Dr. Williams facilitated that work and she is here this evening. And I also have a list of teachers, if I may read them, that supported this work. I'll skip the buildings if that's okay. Julie Shafer, Carrie Wareham, Leslie Baumann, Hannah Mossling, Mossing, sorry, Jen Kirk, Kristen Witten, Cassie Cogburn, Kelly Blum, Jenny Freshley, Jake Miller, Bree Swanson, Erin Smith, Cara Ryder, Mindy Holmes, Kelly Shealy, Elise Johnson, Kristen Marks, Amber Ferguson, and Tammy Saltzman. So questions over these two lists? Again, we're sorry that we're not bringing you a full course of study. That is definitely our goal and we look forward to bringing that to you next year.
So we point out that this is not an exhaustive list of everything students will have the opportunities to read. That's understandable. And just FYI, I think the selection that were made are excellent. But when we talk about the transparency, which I very much appreciate the way we're doing that and providing the opportunity for parents to really get a look at what their students are going to read, are we going to expect the same transparency for non-board-approved materials?
Yes, and I think that's where, in the cases where we've had those conversations, a lot of times what happens is it's a choice book. So you can choose from these five and then it gets a little lost in the shuffle. So really being transparent with every book that a student may choose to read. Yes, and that's, that's a continued effort to help our teacher, you know, to be supportive of our teachers in doing that. And there is, just quickly, there's a board policy, there's a board forum about different components that people should consider when they're choosing a text. You know, does it relate to the course of study? Is it, you know, is that the maturity of the student? Does it really contribute that much more than a book that's already on the list? So there are components that we work with teachers on helping them if they are choosing another book. Because I know they're all home or maybe someplace nicer and warmer, reading books right now, saying, oh, how could I, how could I incorporate this? And this supports the standard so well, how can I use this next year? So we love that our teachers are always learning and reading and looking at what's best for kids.
So just to, excuse me, follow up on that. As someone who has had multiple kids in school at the same time, there's a lot of communication that goes back and forth. So I often rely on like, on Curriculum Night to feel like I'm getting a pretty good picture of what's going on. So can you describe, like, for Curriculum Night for ELA, what can families expect? You know, and I realize, like, you probably haven't, don't have all the details and teachers do Curriculum Night differently. But if I were a parent going to an ELA Curriculum Night, would I expect to walk out of there knowing all the things that might be in front of my kid?
I think you should have an expectation that 95% of what you're seeing, if not 100, because is, is presented to you. My hope would be that not only do you get a paper copy of your syllabus, you get a link to it that is sent to your email so that you can dive deeper. I do still think when our teachers talk about books, I think taking that extra step, okay, so think in helping to explain, you know, one or two more sentences, one or two more bullet points. If there are any areas of concern, I think that's definitely something that they would want to share, any, you know, I remember there was a book choice and it was just kind of out there on this list for my son and it was The Glass Castle. And I was like, ee, like, that needs a little, that needs a little flag on it. Because that book has some very mature, that has mature content in it that I wouldn't just want any 14-year-old picking up without really knowing. You know, so as a parent, I've seen that side of, you can't just put a book out there and expect the parent to do all the research. That's just, I just happen to be me and I, I was familiar with the book. So yes, I did call the school. We had a little conversation.
It's not a Westerville school, you know.
It wasn't here, it was not here, sorry. Sorry, good, good point out. But yeah, I do think we can continue to help. And I think that's a collective effort. I mean, now that we have this list, I mean, if, you know, we don't want to ask every teacher to recreate the wheel for, you know, Curriculum Night. So how are we, you know, working together and leveraging each other so that we can best communicate?
Great, thanks.
I just was going to add, just wanted to butt in for a second. The other thing I was going to add, hi, is that our ELA teachers work really closely with the library and media specialists. So for example, you know, as, as we're kind of like thinking, the, the English teachers haven't read every single book that the students come up. So if they have like, but our library media specialists kind of have. Like, if you talk to Karen Yingling at Blendon, like, she'll come in, for example, Erin Smith at Blendon has an assignment where she has the kids choose a book from the library and Karen comes in with her cart, she'll pick up a book, she'll go through it, and the kids get like a little mini summary. And if the book's not right for them, even after they start reading, they can switch. So sometimes, you know, like for sixth graders, Erin's class is not a sixth-grade class, but it can be a little intense, like Edgar Allan Poe or something, you know, like sometimes teachers will say, oh, it's October, let's do something a little bit spooky and, and fall autumnal and that'll be too intense for the kids. So they'll say, I don't like that one. Okay, no problem. You know, the library media specialists that we have are amazing and they work really closely. They're kind of like honorary ELA. They, they come to our facilitator meetings and they're like our honorary support team as well. So I just wanted to.
Great, thanks.
I do appreciate your efforts to help create additional transparency. It's, it's extremely important and I know that sometimes in the excitement of identifying text in units, some, occasionally, there have been some issues that have arisen that everyone's needed to deal with. And I very much appreciate the way that the district has gone about trying to assist in identifying the most appropriate text and identifying appropriate text for particular children. So I thank you for your work in that.
I just have one follow-up question. So if I was to go to Curriculum Night and get the syllabus and looking at it, will it have, if it says the books, will it have a little blurb with it like this does?
Most of the teachers, yes. If not a blurb, it definitely has a link to it as well. And, you know, to reviews, things to be concerned about. We, different websites do have better, have more complete descriptions.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Social Studies, again, because of our calendar, our six-eight Social Studies courses were due to be updated and to select new materials. And over the course of the year, our teachers explored materials and have selected TCI History Alive that supports all three grade levels. This offers hands-on, so when I was listening to the magnet schools, I'm like, oh, they could, this resource aligns so well with what they are doing at our magnet schools. But really hands-on activities and inquiry projects within each unit in grades six through eight. Also, because it's a little bit wonky with grades six and seven with how Ohio chooses to separate their social studies standards, our students do have access to all of the resources online. Typically, it's done like world history by timeframe and our, we choose in Ohio to have grade six be the eastern hemisphere and grade seven be the western hemisphere, but do their entire history, which is again, a little different because the social studies standards are up to each individual state. So that is a resource for grades six through eight. That would also have some professional learning incorporated into that during our We Days. Also, this year, we implemented Financial Literacy, the semester course that is a required elective. I remember being up here and saying those words to you just over a year ago. And it took us some time to find the right resource to support our students. We do have both social studies and business teachers teaching it. So they spent several, several meetings working through what would be the best fit. As we, this is something that our business teachers have a lot more experience with and they have provided some great professional learning to our social studies teachers. But if I'm a student, my children are in Westerville, which I already said they were not, but if they were, I would, no matter if my son has a business teacher or my daughter has a social studies teachers, we would want that course, we would want the student experience to be the same in that course. So they're really collaborating together to get that right. And they did select teacher materials from McGraw-Hill and then the use of Next Generation Personal Finance online resources, which I did share earlier with Financial Algebra. So Michael and Jill and the team of teachers worked through and as they processed through all of those resources on the website, not one of them overlapped, which made perfect sense because the content is not the same. But they did double-check. So that was great. Several teachers on the middle school team, Jacob Cullen, Zach Murphy, Leslie Thompson, Matt Yingling, Jacob Tooman, Patrick Acox, Jen Cole, Kelly Emmerich, Lauren Griffin. And then for Financial Literacy, we have business and social studies teachers, Carrie Williams, Brett Morrison, Don Ogil, Amanda Mosley, who's been extremely instrumental, Jen Carlson, Ricky Robbins, which, who was a new teacher this year but has taught for a long time and has been very helpful, Caitlin Robbins, no relation, and Kelly Stocker. So a great group of teachers. So I know there's a lot of them, but they have done such great work. We did invite them here tonight, but, you know, it's the summer, so you didn't, you don't really have to come, but it's June 10th, if you want to know. Questions about Financial Literacy or other social studies?
Just with Financial Literacy, when it, when it came up, I know there was concern about Career Center students and IB students. Can you talk about opportunities to fit that in?
Yes, so in collaboration with, if Nick is still here, so in collaboration with the AEC, we have been offering that to students via Apex if they have wanted to take it free of charge. So we have had, I think about six IB students take that opportunity. Either they're doing it all online or they walk across the street. And this summer, we are offering it free to any student who is the class of 2020. who is the class of twenty twenty-five or the class of twenty twenty, excuse me, the class of twenty twenty-six or the class of twenty twenty-seven. It is not a graduation requirement for the class of twenty twenty-five. And that will be offered at least through the end of May of next year for free. And we have twenty-seven students currently enrolled in that class this summer who are taking advantage of that.
Great, thanks.
And there's also an online over the summer, but it's a paid opportunity too, right?
No. We have requested that because of the required elective component of it, that it would not be a charge to students, even if they're ta, I mean, technically, they're all taking it for credit advancement, but there was no charge for that course.
Okay, thanks.
All right, science is next. At the high school level, several of our science courses are part of a national or international program that designed their own curricula. These include international baccalaureate, advanced placement, and Project Lead the Way. To align with their changes, we are updating IB sports, exercise, and health science, AP physics, and Project Lead the Way Principles of Engineering and Human Body Systems. There, an additional, one additional course, Materials Science, has been overdue for a revision and was also updated this year. Students involved in these courses will only see minor changes. For example, fluids moved from AP Physics Two to AP Physics One. Also, AP and IB have revised their courses to have a more integrated approach. Again, loved hearing what the magnets were doing. So they're even working to have that deeper learning be the focus as they teach scientific practices in their learning objectives. So loved to see that. Matt Long, Jeff Mentrich, Keith Elastie, Laura Ferguson, David Johnson, Julie Chance, and a lot of people from South, Mark Schmidling, Matt Christ, Bill Heinemeier, Kathy Frazier, Adam Metzger, and Blake Holderman. I should not be reading diplomas, for sure. I lost that job just now. But again, teachers meeting, reviewing these, understanding, you know, we just have a few physics teachers at our building, so it's really not a big deal for them because if they're teaching one, they're probably teaching two. So those are the changes, and they will see modest changes. Our students will see very modest changes. All right, and that is facilitated by Lindsay Manzo. So I forgot to mention her earlier. And special education, these are our life skills courses. The primary focus of these courses is life application and supporting reflection and communication as it relates to transitioning to adulthood and daily life skills. These courses support and address the learning objectives for students who meet the alternative assessment requirements. So this has been a missing piece that the Curriculum and Instruction Office and Special Education Office have worked together to make sure that we have solid courses of study for these life skill courses. So we have adapted math for grades nine and ten and grades eleven, twelve, and they adapted financial literacy. So as our students and life skills work to meet this new graduation requirement, we needed, we knew we needed this new course. Students are provided a variety of modalities. The studied topics each month are influenced by the grade level of the students, the extended learning standards that it addresses, as well as current events to further solidify the relevance to real-world use. Lindy Whitson facilitated this work from the Special Education Department with Ann Marie Schumaker from Central, Amy Brill from North, Eric Faute, and Stacy Schneider from Aaron, sorry, Faute and Stacy Schneider from South. Again, working on the names. And last year, we brought before you ELA. So this is something that Lindy and her team are focused on, several courses of study every year to be bringing in front of you that support our life skill students. Questions after that one? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next up is Standing Business, eleven point zero one. May I have a motion to approve the resolution requesting state consent to issue bonds of the school district in an amount not to exceed one hundred and forty million and to submit the question of such bond issue to the lectures?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion questions?
Okay. Thank you, President Meyer, and members of the board. So this is the state consent resolution. This is the first of the legislation required to be on the ballot in November. Ohio law requires that if we acquire debt in excess of four percent of our assessed value, then we seek state consent from the Tax Commissioner of Ohio and the Director of Education and Workforce. We are not exceeding nine percent, so the bonds that we'll have on the ballot in November will be one hundred and forty million. That would put us a little over five percent of assessed value. And so we don't require special needs. This is just a simple request to the state for the consent to exceed the four percent. And it is being recommended that the board approve this. And on the twenty-fourth, we will bring back the resolution of necessity for the combined operating and bond issue for your consideration. Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
All right, next up, we have, may I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five annual tax budget for the Westerville Public Library as presented?
So moved. Second.
And Ms. Marshall?
Yes, thank you again. So just a reminder, Westerville Public Library is a separate entity. They have their own board of trustees, they have their own budget. We are simply their taxing authority, and so they submit their budget to us on an annual basis. The board also appoints their trustees, but their budget is separate from ours. It's not on our books in any way, shape, or form. And so this is being presented for their estimates for twenty twenty-five. And they will also have a ballot issue in the fall. Doesn't look like it's been incorporated into this budget. I assume they're waiting until after November to see what that looks like.
Okay. Ready, yeah, ready.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And may I have a motion to approve the resolution for impracticality of transportation?
So moved. Second.
And welcome, Ms. Dennis.
Good evening, President Meyer, Vice President Altman, members of the board, Superintendent Hamburg, and Mrs. Marshall. Ohio Revised Code allows for public schools to determine impracticality of transportation after considering a number of factors, including, but not limited to, the cost of providing transportation and the number of students being transported. The Department of Purchasing and Logistics has evaluated each listed private school student per the requirements of Section thirty-three twenty-seven point zero-two of the Ohio Revised Code and declare the thirteen listed students impractical to transport. Approving this resolution will allow the district to offer payment in lieu of transportation in the manner provided for per the Ohio Revised Code at the rate set by the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve declaring the listed students impractical to transport. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Doesn't look like any.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall?
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And may I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing contract with Garland DBS for the roof repair and replacement project at various district locations?
So moved. Second.
Welcome, Mr. Swartz.
Good evening, Board President, Vice President, Superintendent Hamburg, Treasurer Marshall. I'm here to support and answer any questions on the resolution authorizing a contract to Garland DBS for the roofing and replacement project at various district locations. The scope of work includes work at Anheuser Elementary, that's the replacement of the asphalt shingles on the pitched roof, as well as work on their low slope or flat roof. I shouldn't show that that's not the addition that was just undertaken and completed a few years ago. This is the original building. Some minor repairs at Charrington and work at South High School, specifically doing some repairs over the aux gym, or what used to be the primary gym there. What's important to note, the unit prices utilized for establishing the contractor amount are in alignment with Ohio Revised Code one-six-seven-zero-eight-one. What does that mean? Cooperative purchasing again, so a council of governments. In this case, the group is known as Equalis or the Equalis Group. In order to qualify or utilize their bidding that they undertook for this work previously, we must be a member in good standing, which this board is. Hence, we were able to utilizing that pricing and that contract to move forward Garland with this work. The substantial completion for this work is August first of this year, and the contract amount is five hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and zero change. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments? All right, Ms. Marshall?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And may I have a motion to approve the resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing agreement with Triad Facility Solutions for the asphalt maintenance and repair project based on urgent necessity?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Swartz?
Okay, so as you just read, this, of course, is a contract to go to TFS for asphalt maintenance and repairs project based on an urgent necessity, which we'll talk about in a second. The scope of the work involves asphalt milling, repair, replacement, which is significant. We did that last year at the ELC here. We're doing that at several sites around the district this year. Our goal is to get ahead and eventually do the entire district over the next four to five years. So when we're patching, we're able to take more useful or more better use of return investment of public dollars for maintaining parking lots. We tended to just patch some in the past. We are doing some patching, though. We do not have adequate funds to get to every parking lot in the district. So there are several schools that are also getting asphalt patching and repair. What's important to note is this district needs to proceed down, of course, in order to get it completed before the start of the school year, also to align with available public dollars. The urgent necessity, the need to invoke the use of urgent necessity action is tied to B O E approval of this proposal and the associated process is due to changes issued, or really opinions issued by two agencies empowered by the state of Ohio to interpret statute, Attorney General's Office and the Auditor of State. So under guidance of our legal counsel, while nothing has changed in terms of the process we've used both now and over the last ten years, or recommending to use tonight, they are advising we invoke urgent necessity just to make ourselves ironclad relative to any auditing changes that could come down the pike. It's also important to note, TFS, the contractor in question, has been used for over ten years specific to this very scope of work and this exact same process. Again, we empower them and develop with them a scope of work. They solicit proposals, they receive five, they then come back and act as our contractor or agent, and award to that contractor, assuming you approve contract to them. This work, if proceeded, would finish on or before August first, and is a total of eight hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. And I'm happy to answer any questions for this resolution.
Could you just real quickly talk about, you know, wanting to get more of this work done? Like, if we're on a sort of schedule of, you know, getting parking lots replaced, repaired, is that what you're trying to get to?
Correct, so parking lot work is obviously very extensive and has to occur, is limited to, not only for weather reasons, summer, but also to school schedule reasons, can occur essentially June and July are our windows of opportunity. So we were actually already proceeding down the path using the same process we've used for over ten years when our attorney advised us only about a week or two ago that it'd be best to invoke the use of urgent necessity. Again, we're still following this, nothing's changed in terms of the legalities of what we're doing, in terms of the interpretation of the statute, in terms of what we're doing. It is only that there's been some recent issues or letters issued by the auditor, and I can go into a little more detail if you want, of what they've done to change that our attorney said there's always the possibility they could change, but they have not at this time in terms of what is deemed appropriate.
What does that urgent necessity mean?
So urgent necessity, what you're voting on is to waive competitive bidding. So Ohio statute requires competitive bidding applying to any public school district undertaking repairs, replacement, renovation, or demolition of any educational facility where the contract is greater than fifty thousand. However, about ten years ago, the Ohio Supreme Court weighed in and said, let's clarify what we mean by the term buildings, school buildings, and they clarified that literally to mean educational buildings. So it did not apply to parking lots, exterior fences, basically anything on the site. And so we have used that as a district, as we're even doing today with the addition of urgent necessity, to go outside of there to solicit bids, in this case through TFS. We've used that, though, schools have for over a decade all through Ohio, fencing, playgrounds, athletic facilities, et cetera. But the state auditor weighed in on a recent contract for a new press box at a school district in Ohio, an unnamed school district, and some locker room improvements. And in their interpretation, said those now fall under the guise of school buildings or educational facilities. So again, it did not amend anything relative to what we're doing with site improvements, but it specifically incorporated architectural permitted improvements, i.e. a press box and locker improvements for a non-educational facility should apply under that ruling.
Thank you.
All right.
You ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And may I have a motion to approve the resolution selecting Design Group Architects and Planners Incorporated for Design Professional Services Two of the district's facilities master plan?
So moved. Second.
And Mr. Swartz, will you talk to us about this, too?
All right, so this one's really exciting. The treasurer earlier had at least a first reading on the proposed bond issue for this very project that this architect would be responsible for. So I'm going to walk you through the process, just so the public can understand how we came to the unanimous decision of an evaluation committee to recommend Design Group. So the board or the district's required issue for professional services, you do not solicit a dollar proposal. You must submit or request for qualifications or a statement of qualifications from architect firms. So we issued an RFQ about four months ago, specific to this project, but also it included language that we could consider other capital improvements, and there'll be a resolution here later for shore architects that were involved in that same process. So through that RFQ process, we received eight SOQs, or Statement of Qualifications. Of those eight, we shortlisted through a five-member evaluation committee that was made up of Business Operation Manager, Mr. Dorn, myself, our Maintenance Manager, Mr. Material, and Director of I T, Tim Stifler. We shortlisted down to four firms. Those four firms were then invited to do a presentation, thirty minutes, with fifteen minutes Q and A afterwards. They were also given very specific requirements in terms of topics we wanted them to discuss, whether that was community interaction, how did they communicate, how did they deal with DEI? How did they deal with construction administration in terms of communicating, how are we doing during construction? What's coming up? How much money do we have? What are any changes? And based on that, the firm that was deemed most responsible, if you will, or professional, was Design Group Incorporated. It was unanimous from the now extended ten-member committee. That committee was expanded to include a member of each of the four schools considered on the bond issue. So there was a parent from Charrington Elementary, there was a teacher from Huber Ridge, the principal from Blendon, and the head custodian from Walnut Springs, and one additional member. We invited a couple other folks, but one member was willing to devote the roughly eight hours of time we asked of them. He's a member of Strategic Planning Team, he's a community member also. He's a part of Westerville Zoning Committee, and he's also works for Ohio State and Facilities. So he was an amazing asset. So those ten folks then were involved in the presentations. Again, we scored them, discussed it, it was not an easy decision. But in the end, Design Group was deemed the firm that would be the best fit and most appropriate and have the best skill sets to move forward for these projects. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, Ms. Marshall?
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And may I have a motion to approve the resolution selecting Shore Architects Incorporated for Design Professional Services for the renovation addition of their early learning learning center renovation project?
So moved. Second.
And Mr. Swartz?
Okay. So this architect was involved in the same process I just outlined. They were one of the four that was shortlisted and then they presented. Again, the RFQ was written such that the board, or we had the option to recommend to the board, two architects for the FMP or the 140 million dollar project. Uh, we had the ability to add other capital projects. So one of the projects that's been talked about in the past with the facilities master plan is the renovation of the very building in addition to what we're sitting in here. Specifically, you've heard reference to the fact there are pre-K classes at Point View. The goal of the administration is to bring those back to this building. So do an addition for the pre-K, do some renovations in this, this space, and actually move the board offices potentially down to the first floor, as well as rectify things such as, uh, better circulation in terms of separation of buses, cars, things of that nature. So that's the nature of this project, is the one single other project we believe is well-defined enough and in a position that we could recommend moving forward. We don't believe some of the other scope that was discussed is at that point yet. Uh, in terms of, uh, Tony Shore Architects, um, again, some of their skills specific to, they've done a lot of renovation work. They've been in business for over 25 years. Uh, some of the projects they're working on now include extensive renovation additions. Two work in Worthington Schools were similar to here. It would be a facility that's being renovated while it's occupied. So Design Group also had that for their projects as well. Best one to point that out for shore architects. And also clarify, you're not approving tonight an actual dollar in your contract. You're approving authorization to proceed and authorize the treasurer and the president, the superintendent and whatnot to negotiate and finalize a contract. Uh, so that's why there's no number associated with either of these resolutions. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions for the recommendation for shore architects.
Any questions?
No, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall, please take the vote. Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. Thank you. And next up, uh, we have a couple of comments, and there is none. So moving along to board comments. Who would like to start?
I'll just circle back to congratulate everybody that we honored at the beginning. It really is such a joy to have them here and in the summer and have those seniors come back, willing to come back and be recognized one more time. It's really special to see them here. So I appreciate that. And I also want to thank you for making comments earlier. Um, really appreciate you being here and, um, you know, I'll have follow-up questions and so on. So thank you. Yeah, thank you all.
Um, well, I won't restate what my colleagues said. I, I agree. Um, thank you for your comments and congratulations to all the folks. Um, I want to thank the team for all the work that they did for the curriculum and just wish the students that start summer school and the teachers, happy summer, summer school? I think, um, okay. And so, uh, the board will meet in regular session on Monday, June 24th, at 6:00 PM at the Early Learning Center, which is here, but it's 936 East Wind Drive, Westerville, Ohio. And, um, with that, may I have a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of considering the discipline in dismissal of public employees and employment and compensation of public employees?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Marshall? Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. Thank you.
It's 8:14. Everybody ready? All right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All right. Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
9:28. Bang the gavel.